Okay, call to order, March eighteenth, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. All right, we're gonna start with the discussion item, I think that'll be a little quicker. Sixty-five eighty-eight High Street Avalon Bay, report of condition forty-three of February twenty-five twenty-two, approved sub district A, definitive master plan, special permit which required a traffic monitoring program for a two-year period, beginning approximately one year after the first certificate of occupancy was issued for a residential building. We have a longer, what I anticipate will be a longer public hearing, so I'm gonna have you guys go first, you guys don't have to wait. All right, as a reminder, one of the conditions of the Avalon Bay project was a monitoring program for traffic. So I believe this is the second time you've been before us, post. Okay, so this will be the second of the two traffic studies, okay? So why don't we, why don't you tell us what you've learned?
Sure, thank you. For the record, my name is Vinod Kalikiri, I'm a senior transportation planner with VHB. So back in June of twenty nineteen was when we had originally prepared a traffic study for the Avalon Bay development. And so it's obviously been a few years. As part of the conditions of approval for that project, the developer Avalon Bay is required to come back and do post-construction traffic monitoring studies twice at one-year intervals, to come back and see how the, how the traffic, actual traffic out on the streets and how much traffic the site's generating, and how that compares to the original estimates that were included in the twenty nineteen traffic study. So that was kind of the framework of the condition of approval. And the purpose of that is to essentially to see if the numbers are off, how much are they off? And if that triggered the need for any improvements, for example, to offset any additional impacts or unanticipated impacts of the project. So we, as you mentioned, I was back here just almost about a year ago when we presented the findings of our first traffic study. The numbers were generally in line, plus or minus a few cars, it wasn't, it wasn't off by much. And so we kind of left at that time saying we'd come back and do a second monitoring study a year later. So the first monitoring study, the data was collected actually in November of twenty twenty-three, and I believe we were in front of the board presenting it in February, March of last year was when we presented the findings. The second round of monitoring counts, we did it, did those in October of last year, October twenty twenty-four, which is essentially about a year after the first round of monitoring counts. And we submitted a study based on the new data on February tenth, that's part of the record. Again, the overall findings are generally consistent across the board. The numbers are, the development itself is generating traffic either in line with or slightly less than what we had previously projected in the original traffic study. But in this latest observations that we did in October, there's actually a slight increase in traffic overall from at the side driveway. And we tried to figure out what, what the cause of that could be. And what we established was that there's actually a shared parking lot with adjacent commercial user, adjacent to the Avalon Bay development, and that parking lot is used by some of their employees. And when you look at the increases, what we noticed was like there were about seventeen additional cars in the morning that were coming into that shared parking lot. And in the afternoon, there were about thirty-five or thirty-six cars, more than what we had estimated that were leaving the parking lot. And when you think about those numbers, you know, from a residential development, you would generally have more exiting traffic in the morning and more entering traffic in the evening. But the increases are actually the opposite, in the opposite direction, indicating that those are likely associated with the commercial user, the usage of the office parking, shared parking in the lot. And again, that, the number is about seventeen cars in the morning and about thirty-five or thirty-six cars in the afternoon. But when you do count outside on the high street at the intersection of the driveway, overall side driveway with high street, the overall intersection traffic is substantially lower, it's almost two hundred cars less traveling through that intersection now than what we had previously estimated in two thousand and nineteen. So even though there were seventeen to thirty-five additional cars that are in the parking lots, traveling into and out of the parking lots at morning and afternoon peak times, the overall traffic flow at the high street intersection, which is essentially a measure of, you know, whether the project has impact or not on the area roadways, that traffic is overall a substantial reduction than, than what we had in the original study. And then also shows no, you know, noticeable or measurable impacts in terms of delays or queuing or additional metrics that would be associated with the changes we noticed. And so essentially, the finding of the study was that there would be no need for additional improvements or anything else that needs to be done to offset unanticipated impacts, there were none.
Okay, any board questions or comments?
We haven't got any butter comments or anything on it. I mean, we would have, I assume if there were an issue, we would hear about it.
No, I mean, I think there, I mean, there was an accident recently on High Street, I don't, I think he was further down. It was related to this. No, I mean, from what I can tell, it seems to match up with what was predicted. I mean, I think the ultimate question for us would be, is there anything else that needs to be done in terms of traffic impacts? And I don't see that there would be anything else, especially coming in and out of those parking lots.
I mean, the one observation I would make, and it doesn't have anything to do with the, the traffic flow or anything, and it's moot to some degree, but looking seriously at the project, I think the parking lots type, that's just my one observation about the place in general, it doesn't have anything to do with this. But if, if I had to do the whole thing over again, I probably would have said, is there any way we could just, I don't know, do something with the parking close to the buildings and stuff to make it look more attractive and more open? Looks just pretty congested, just neither here nor there, but just sort of the, the overall aesthetic.
Okay.
I just have one, I guess, general comment, and this is before my time. So I guess I'm kind of surprised that the estimates in taking consideration the commercial traffic, was this an after, was this like something that happened afterwards that there was a shared, shared lot with commercial traffic?
No, but, I mean, the question before us at the time was how much traffic is going to be brought in by this project? So they estimated, based on residential uses and all, and the number of units and all that, how much traffic would be. And then also how much the parking would be and how much would be used. So I think what it's basically saying is that there's now more, the office spaces being used more now than it was at the time, or being, you know.
That's a function of the employee levels in the, in the commercial space, you know, if they have more employees now, where there are more tenants or, you know, tenants with higher employee density, you could have more people going to the commercial use and parking in the shared parking lots than a year ago.
Right, and it's high, well, and a year ago, there was still a lot more of remote work than there is now, right? So I think that's, I mean, in essence, that's probably a good thing that we have more of the commercial use, that's what we want.
Yeah, I mean, I think net's definitely a good thing, I'm just, I guess, surprised, like, that's, I mean, effectively, some of these numbers are off by like, I guess you look at the weekday P M, it's like thirty percent, right, based off of the estimates, but we get it, we're not getting any butter.
Also, the magnitude of the numbers are relatively small, I mean, what we are reporting is the actual numbers, but you know, and you think about like seventeen additional cars an hour on a road that carries, high street that carries hundreds of vehicles an hour, I mean, it's, it's, you don't notice the difference, but mathematically, there is a slight increase, and that's what we quantify here.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, continued public hearing, four-thirty Osgood Street, North Andover Public Schools. Application for limited site plan review under Article Eight, Part Three, Site Plan Review, Article Ten, Administration, Section one ninety-five, ten point seven, the North Andover zoning bylaw. Applicant proposes renovation of existing athletic facilities to include the installation of a multipurpose synthetic turf field, reconstruction of existing tennis courts, drainage improvements, athletic lighting and wetland restoration. The site is located within the R-two residential zoning district. So you can attach to the H D M I.
Yep.
One second. And hopefully, if everything is on, that will project. All right, great.
All right.
Gene can stay on vacation, okay. So we'll do just a little, I'm gonna do Gene's recap. So we opened this public hearing last, last meeting. It is a limited site plan review under Article Eight, Part Three, which is our Dover bylaw amendment. It is proposing reconstruction and renovation of some existing athletic facilities, including the installation of multipurpose synthetic turf, that's at the baseball field, reconstruction of the existing tennis courts, some drainage improvements, lighting, lighting specifically at the football field, two added lights, and then lights at the track, which does not currently have lights, and wetland restoration. We started the public hearing, John and Chris were not here, but they have watched on, caught themselves up by watching the video and signed forms accordingly. We heard a presentation from the applicant with a lot of information. The board asked a lot of questions, we got some of butter questions or comments. And where we left off was, gave you, the applicant, a bunch of things to come back and report on. There was some stormwater and some other things out to peer review, which are continuing to go through that process. So what we're gonna do tonight is I'm gonna hear first from the applicant with new information, answers to questions, things like that. Anything that's new since the last meeting, any questions, answers to questions that were posed at the last meeting. I'm then going to read in some public comments that we received via email. And at any point during the applicant's presentation, if board members want to ask questions, certainly do that. Then I'll read a public comment that has come in, then we'll take public comment. And during that, we'll also have board member questions and comments. That is what I anticipate for today. At the end of the meeting, I would like to try to schedule a site visit. I think that's important, so I'd like to talk with the board about scheduling that when we're through, okay? All right, so with that, go right ahead.
Okay, you all will have to forgive me because my notes are also on my laptop, so you'll be seeing what I'm reading a little bit, but there's nothing on there you can't see, so don't mind me. All right, so to reiterate and for the record, my name is Kyle Rowan, I'm a project manager with Gale Associates. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the owner and applicant, the town of North Andover and North Andover Public Schools. This is in regards to a limited site plan review application that was submitted on January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. This application was submitted concurrently with a notice of intent and partial certificate of compliance application to the Conservation Commission that same day. For, for this board's notice, if you're not aware already, that partial certificate of compliance application was approved by the North Andover Conservation Commission at the last meeting last week on March twelfth. In addition to that, Gale has since provided to the Conservation Commission response packages on February twenty-fifth, March third, and March seventeenth. We were continued at the last hearing and are still on that path now. We have met with the planning board once on February twenty, February twenty-fifth, and this is our second meeting tonight. With respect to the third-party stormwater peer review, we received the initial rounds of comments from Horsley Witten on February twentieth, and we provided formal responses to those comments and questions in our full response package to this board, which was issued on March tenth. So the point of being here tonight, as was already discussed, is to run through that, that submission package provided on March tenth and kind of touch on the highlights here of what's changed. So I think for starters, maybe the best way to do this is to focus on anything that's actually changed in the plans as a result of comments received at the first hearing from this board, as well as public comment and, and comment and questions from Horsley Witten, the third-party reviewer. So with respect to what's actually changed on the plans, it's relatively minor relative to the last time we were here. We had discussed, for starters, additional safety measures at the crosswalk leading from the proposed walkway at the tennis courts across the access drive to the existing sidewalk. In terms of additional safety measures, what is on this plan now is crosswalk signage on either side, and that is more or less what it's limited to. The striping was already there in the initial iteration of these plans. And where can you go from there in terms of additional protections is really, that's when you get into a raised crosswalk or speed bumps on either side, which the North Andover DPW has specifically cautioned against due to snowplows and what that will ultimately do to those. So that's where we stand on that item.
I need to say, I, I drove, well, actually, I had my, I was in the passenger seat, which is interesting, because my son has taken driving lessons. So that, I know, very, very interesting, we survived. But we went by here to practice in the high school, and that was actually blocked off because, like, it's falling apart. So it is in desperate need of repair, because it was actually blocked off, and you have to kind of, look like you have to like hop the fence.
What is blocked off?
The path going here, because it was like the walkway had like, caved in. So it is, it is in desperate need of repair.
Yeah, I think you might be referencing a little further up the road there, the existing sidewalk.
Right.
And yes, that is very much, that was an existing sidewalk over a culvert, which connected the two wetlands. That is being removed as part of this project scope.
Okay.
And that section of wetland, as you can see on the plan a little bit here, is being restored. There will not be a walkway anymore through the wetlands, that's gonna be moved down to where it's shown below them.
Okay, yeah, and it just, it looked like there was just not a very good way to get over to the tennis courts, nor any real markings in general that would alert people. Whatever we do is gonna be an improvement.
So we will be adding the crosswalk marking itself, we'll be adding signage on either side. And I can say definitively, it's, it's going to be an improvement over a collapsed culvert walkway.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so in addition to that, another item that was discussed was potentially reconstructing a significant portion of the fence between the abutters next to the Far East Track. So what you see on this plan here, from where my hand is here, down to this area, this is about three hundred and fifty feet of proposed six-foot chain link fence with a windscreen for privacy. The reason it stops right here is we get into a really steep riprap slope that goes all the way around this bend to the fire station that was newly constructed. So at this point, we believe it's, it's pretty well obstructed and people can't get back there. So it'll start in this area, again, run down along the vegetation line to end right here, outside of the fifty-foot, no build zone. And that is, that is what we were proposing there. The terminus down at this south side, for what it's worth, is a good forty feet from the actual property line. And this is all thick bramble-like vegetation in that area. Okay, in addition to the fencing, I think the most major change is, I'm gonna go back two sheets here, the access drive. So from right here, running down to here, and then we go to our next sheet. You can see it continuing here and terminating here. So a few changes that have come up as a result of additional comments from the North Andover Fire Department, as well as our conversations and hearings with the Conservation Commission. We are leaving this gravel drive, or well, I shouldn't say leaving, this is gonna be a reconstructed gravel drive, ten feet in width. We are removing and shifting the existing curb cut, which is right about here, up fifty feet to get us entirely out of the no-build zone for the adjacent wetlands. That is a Conservation Commission recommendation. So we'll be shifting that up, you're gonna have a twelve-foot vehicle gate.
Can you explain what you mean by up? I don't understand what direction that's moving.
Up the drive, sorry, so the existing curb cut is right here. So we're gonna fill that curb cut in, that'll be a six-inch curb, and then the new curb cut is up towards the high school, which will be right there. There will be a vehicle gate with timber guardrail on either side until it either hits vegetation or the existing slope up towards the field in, in an attempt, or as a measure to mitigate against anyone getting through there with a vehicle, unless it's an emergency vehicle through that specific access gate. So there will be signage, again, highlighting this is an emergency access entrance only. So what is currently being used as a parking lot will no longer be used as such. Another item that was brought up with the Conservation Commission, which is not currently on this plan, because this came up just last week, is we will be adding a four-foot chain link fence along the whole southwestern side of this walkway, right along down here, as a means of keeping people entirely out of the fifty-foot no-disturb zone. So we will issue a follow-up response package to this board, which responds to Horsley Witten's second round of comments. And in that, will include a revised plan set that will include that, that fence addition, which is really the only change based on the conversations we had with the commission last week. So the last item on the list in terms of plan changes is gonna bring us to lighting. And pardon the number of sheets here. So at the last planning board meeting, it was requested that we provide a zero-grid plan, which is what you see here, which, if you recall, the last time, what, what it showed us was the actual, the horizontal foot candles a hundred and fifty feet out from the proposed poles. This one, however, might be a little tough to see, shows you horizontal foot candles every fifteen feet or so across the entirety of what will be lit.
Okay, just as, just as a reminder, and just so that we know, this, the track is currently not lit, correct?
Correct.
And the proposal is for four lighting stations, right, S-nine, S-n, S-eleven, S-twelve?
Mm-hmm.
And remind us again where, what they're designed to light?
So they're designed to light the field alone, this will not light the track. Obviously, a portion of it will, will be subject to some light from those poles, but it is intended to light the green rectangle within the track sufficient for safe play.
Okay, and so that's why I assume we have the higher numbers within the track, I'm sorry, within the field.
Yes, so for reference, I know they're really hard to see on the screen here. These numbers in here kind of vary between forty and thirty foot candles. And then you make your way out here to say just behind the poles, and you're down to point two, point five, point four, point three. And then you can see the delineation between black and red, that is where you reach zero. So I do want to provide an update on this, based on public comment at the last board meeting. We went back to one of the vendors that designs these lighting systems and asked them to see what, what knobs they could push and twist and whatnot to cut things back as best they could. We cannot reduce the pole height entirely, we can reduce the pole heights to eighty feet on both sides. So originally, it was ninety on this side, eighty on this side. These are now both gonna be at eighty feet in height. And what they did is they actually increased the number of fixtures, and that allows them to give a much sharper cutoff line around the track. So this zero line that you see here, again, from point one to zero, is actually significantly closer into the track and field than it was in our previous submission.
Is this with the new, is this, this is the new?
This is the new design you're looking at, and that's in the package we sent on March tenth, this is. So this is improved pretty significantly. You can see that, again, delineation between black and red making its way around here. So again, beyond, into the red area would be zero foot candles.
So let me ask, for S-twelve and S-eleven?
Yep.
The number is one hundred and fifty-five, is that a hundred and fifty-five feet from the base of the pole to the edge of the green field?
No, so all of these poles are eighty feet in height, this, these distances here are actually from the center of the field. So that's a hundred and fifty-five feet from the center line of the turf field.
Okay, so that helps me, so now up to S-nine and S-ten, it's a hundred and eighty feet. And so my question is, would it be possible to move that zero line further away from the residence without impacting the illumination on the field? If S-nine and S-ten were moved to something near a hundred and fifty-five feet from the center of the field? And what I'm really getting to is, on the top of that image, the red track is extended into a rectangular piece. And I don't understand why the poles are on the far side of that extended rectangular piece when it could be closer to where the number one is in one eighty on both sides. So in other words, it would be in that nook.
Yeah, so I get what you're saying, because I think those are, look to me to be long jump and pits, so people are running and jumping into that, and.
I assume that's why that's, well, I'm not saying exactly where the one eighty is, I'm saying mimic the distance from the actual oval that you have on S-eleven and S-twelve with S-nine and S-ten. And if you do that, you're really bringing that, because, you know, you showed us, well, let me just finish one point, you showed us how neatly the zero line is on the upper-left part of the oval, good point. But we're really interested in the top part, and I'm not suggesting that you put a pole in front of a long jump. I'm, I'm suggesting that, is it possible to locate the pole, I'm not saying in that rectangular piece, but on the edge of the oval, similar to how it is for the two bottom poles? Somewhere where your hand is in that general area.
Right. So for starters, ultimately, I have to defer to the actual lighting designer on this. We will most certainly bring this question to them. How they achieve, you know, the lighting they need for player safety is, is their wheelhouse. We can bring that up. The, the two things I do want to point out, however, are this current zero line, for one, it does not factor in vegetation. So this is assuming that the, the ground beneath the trees is, everything is flat, there's no trees there. So that's what it would be without the addition, additional shielding of vegetation, particularly in the warmer seasons. And where it's shown now, that zero line is falling pretty much within or on the school property side of the property line in that area. Two, my concern is, when these designs begin, one of the earliest stages of this process is geotechnical investigation. As part of that, we had to go out way back in October and November and perform geotechnical borings, specifically in these areas where these light poles were preliminarily designed to go. So in that case, it's, you know, it's ultimately, again, up to this lighting designer and their structural engineers, whether they are able to shift over, say, whatever that would be, fifty feet, given where the borings are, but at the moment.
Be something on the order of twenty-five feet. The difference between one fifty-five and one eighty rather than fifty feet. But to your point, the geotechnical, look, if the ground can't support it, then of course, the pole cannot be put there. But if, as you described, the geotechnical analysis was done at the proposed location of the poles, that doesn't necessarily tell us that it couldn't be somewhere else. It just tells us that the proposed location was sufficient to support it. And in terms of player safety that you mentioned, certainly, I'm all for player safety, and I am not suggesting we impact that. But my question is based in part on if the design can ensure player safety with poles that are a hundred and fifty-five feet from center line on the lower edge of the image, is there something about the top edge that impacts player safety if they're a similar distance? It's a question.
Yep.
So if you could pose that, I'd be interested in what the analysis is. And again, I'm not suggesting it go in the rectangle, I'm not suggesting it interfere in any way with the long jump.
Right, I, I just have concerns, even if it's next to it, that that's, you want it behind. But it would, just from a safety for people there, but let's ask the question and find out, and I think they have to consider.
I mean, if we gain twenty-five feet, it could have a healthy impact with what we're trying to achieve here, but, but let's find out.
Okay. All right, so that's, we have that new information, okay? Great.
Okay. I think while we're on the topic of lighting, just some other things. I want to touch on some questions that came up at the last planning board meeting and questions we provided formal responses to in our response package, was the need for FAA lighting on top of the poles. That is not required. That's typically only required on objects 200 feet or higher, particularly ones that are within the actual flight path. We are three-quarters of a mile away and not within any flight paths, and this has been confirmed by our lighting consultant. Other things that came up, one question was whether the, there could be an analysis done relative to the abutters vantage from their balcony, one of the abutters up to the northeast of the property here. All I can say is, that is possible. It would cost, and we would, of course, need to be formally directed to do that, to take on that cost. It's possible, I'm not sure what it's going to provide, but we at least note that this consultant can do that if need be, and that's provided in the written responses. Let's see. Just want to reiterate, this lighting was redesigned. We went back and forth with them. They did the very best they could to tighten things up and close off the cutoff line. Another benefit of this was, we more neatly fit into the dark sky regulations, which is not only a request of this board, but also of the Conservation Commission. Phase one determination of dark sky compliance should not be an issue with this design the way it is. And just for the board's reference, dark sky is a separate entity that evaluates these designs. Phase one is performed at the design stage. Phase two is actually performed when the lights are on site and they go out in the field. So, you can only get to phase one at this point.
Thank you for tightening that up.
Yep. What else do we have? I think that's pretty much it for lighting. Unless anyone has any other questions on the questions from the last hearing.
We might get back to some, but once I, I want you to go through what you have, and then when we go through the butter comments, we'll see what hasn't been hit yet.
Okay. So, next, I'm going to pull up Horsley-Witten's second response package, which they provided on the 14th.
I know, I went through most of it. Most of it looks like it was responded to with no further action required. So, can you just talk about any items that are still open?
Correct, yep, that's the plan.
I think it's two at the end.
So, there were a few items. 4B, which was additional treatment of wastewater or stormwater from Wayne Street before it reaches the wetlands. So, what they said for BIDIM on this one was, the applicant has noted that the runoff from Wayne Street will continue to be managed in the same way it is under existing conditions. Horsley-Witten notes that it would be beneficial to the wetlands if there is any opportunity to provide additional treatment prior to flowing to the wetlands. So, again, we will provide formal response to this in our upcoming package, but I do just want to informally address this. One second. Actually, this might be the best. So, this is Wayne Street, right here. It's the access drive to the school. Just as a reminder, in our proposed conditions, we are not proposing any changes to Wayne Street itself other than some reconstruction of the sidewalk here and reconstruction of a portion of the sidewalk up at this part, just for the access to the field. So, with respect to Horsley-Witten's recommendation of additional treatment, our response to that would be that the only option that really stands is there is a drain manhole right here, which the Wayne Street subsurface stormwater infrastructure ties into before it flows out through a flare-end section into the wetland area. The only thing we could do potentially would be to replace the drain manhole with an outlet control structure, but this would require additional construction, excavation, and disturbance, not only within the 25-foot no-build zone of the wetlands, but also within the 200-foot riverfront area, all things we're trying to avoid as part of this project. So, that's going to be our response to that for the time being, and of course, subject to comment. But, that's where we stand on that one. Another thing, I guess, I want to point out with our current plan is while we are not adjusting things to Wayne Street specifically, we are going to be removing this entire gravel parking area. We're shifting the baseball field a good 60 feet up from where it currently is, installing fencing along this drive, and allowing the area behind the fencing to grow back into its vegetative state. So, we are providing a significant buffer here that does not currently exist. So, jumping back to Horsley-Witten, very sorry to jump around quite this much, but no choice. Their next item was 8B, which brings us to right here, I'm sorry, 8A, which was that a stormwater pollution prevention plan is required. As part of the project, they're suggesting this is a condition of approval. We've seen that plenty of times before. And just to reiterate, that will be in our bid specifications as something the contractor is required to do prior to construction. Next item is 9A, which is, Horsley-Witten recommends that the proposed O&M plan be combined with or expanded to include the stormwater practices for the entire high school campus. With response to this one, presumably, if included, this would be included as a condition. And I think at least our intent is that our O&M plan for this specific scope and this project is intended to be, again, specific to our improvements, but then ultimately, that will be supplemental and introduced and included with the overall high school O&M plan, which is not void by way of us doing this project, because that applies to the entire parcel. So, that will remain in effect, and ours is simply an additional O&M plan supplementary to that. Next item, we have 9B, which was a BMP sketch that was inadvertently not included in the last package. So, this was simply a matter of a missing attachment. We have that right here, and that will be included on the forthcoming submission to this board and in response to Horsley-Witten. And what else do we have? We're almost done. 9G is suggested condition of approval. Recommends that the planning board consider requesting receipt of a signed O&M plan as a condition of approval. So, that's, that's all that is, recommended condition. And then 10A is the illicit discharge statement. And my understanding of this, as Horsley-Witten is suggesting, again, this is a condition of approval, that the actual owner of the parcel, not only the contractor, but the owner, provide a signed illicit discharge statement as a condition of approval. And with that, just some other things I want to touch on. The response package that we sent on the 10th. In terms of enclosures, we have the revised permit plan set, which shows the things we've just gone through now. The revised stormwater report, the biggest change to that would be the revision in the infiltration rates used. We dropped those infiltration rates down to include a factor of safety of two at Horsley-Witten's request. So, the report is slightly amended on account of that, as is the HydroCAD report. We have a revised O&M manual, a final geotechnical report. If you recall, the last time we met, the borings had not been formalized in the report. So, we have that, and now you have that. And Horsley-Witten's peer review comments. And the final item is a letter of intent as to why this project is necessary, which was provided to us by North Andover Public Schools.
Where is that? Can you pull that up?
Yep, I can, one second.
Do we know where that is in the...
That is enclosure seven of the package we sent on the 10th. So, in the document itself, it's going to be the very last page.
Okay, thank you. I think that, we appreciate you taking the time and also trying to get us answers to questions that we posed. Why don't we do this? Yep, first, I'm going to go to John and Chris, because you guys weren't here. So, if you have any, if you have any questions, then we'll go to other board members.
I did have one question, it's maybe a form of observation. Could we put the map of where the baseball field is, the...
The plan?
Yeah, the plan for the baseball, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, you talked at length about how you slid up the field because of the wetlands, and I presume that's the predominant reason for doing it. What consequence of that, as I looked at it, is that, let's assume the baseball field is, it's a baseball field. I don't know if literally every type of field has the same footprint. But, a consequence of doing that is that a portion of your football field is going to be on the baseball infield. It's, which is, you know, not optimally what you want, because if, if you're striping the field toward baseball season, you're going to have striping on the field. And if you're going to play football there, out of season, you're going to have a dirt parting football field. I mean, just, you know, and I didn't know whether that was just because of the geometry of what you're dealing with, or whether you, that was a trade-off you were willing to make, or what? I just...
So, so just to clarify, this, this entire system in here, including the infield, that's all the same material. It's just a different color. So, it's all synthetic turf material.
Oh.
There's no actual dirt.
There's no dirt in the infield?
The dirt is thick dirt.
Okay. I, okay, it's far less of an issue. I think it's still a little bit of a... Well, how would you stripe the fields with a...
So, this, the football striping you see here is actually going to be inlaid in the carpet itself. So, it's a permanent striping. And again, the infield for baseball, infield for softball, that's going to be permanently a different color. So, there are overlapping colors. It's very common on these turf field systems, and, you know...
So, so you are setting it for football, not for soccer?
There is soccer lining as well.
Oh, there is both, okay.
The point of this, really the selling point of a project of this scope is that you can fit five, six sports onto one field. Obviously, they're not playing concurrently, but they will all have usable access to the dimensional requirements of their sport.
It does get confusing. So, like, my son played at a field in Manchester, and there's a turf field like this, and it had like eight different colored stripes. It was all blue, and then it had eight different colored stripes. And it sometimes can be hard to figure out which lines you're using, you're using soccer versus lacrosse versus field hockey. But, they figure it out. It just takes a little time.
Okay, I had no idea that the infield's where the material is. So, how does that make the baseball?
Chris, anything in particular?
No, just trying to get my bearings on this right here. Talk about the tennis courts, we're talking about the tennis courts dropping into the high school to the right.
Yep.
We're talking about removing the parking lot that is kind of diagonal from the tennis courts, I believe, right? And then where this baseball field is now, I believe it's existing in rougher condition. Where, where is the practice turf in this plan? So, we have our stadium, right? Then behind that, we have our practice turf that we use. And then there's the baseball field behind that. Does this sound accurate?
I'm not sure what you're...
So, everything's going to, these are going to stay, they're just moving 70 feet.
This, there's...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So...
The same...
There's only the football field and test. There's not a separate practice thing.
Well, we, we play some lacrosse games on the practice turf directly to the side of the football stadium. You know what area I'm talking about?
So, these two fields right here.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so those are staying.
Yes, those aren't being impacted.
Correct.
Okay. That's what I was trying to get my head around, okay? And that's being, baseball field is being pushed up. Okay.
Okay, and track is staying where it is. It's just lighted. Okay, great. You guys have anything you want to add at this point? There'll be more time later on. If you just did anything else, you got anything now before we go to a butter comments?
We have a Google Earth image of this area.
I can pull that up, assuming I have internet here. Let's see. Oh, there's our answer. One second. I think I can get on here. I've tried it before.
Yeah.
Try again. I'll go back out, back in.
So, can you zoom in where it says Google at the bottom center? By that parking lot and the tennis courts, yes, right there. So, I know we talked last time about parking, and parking for the tennis courts is going to be up at the high school. And that's the way it is. So, my comment is, having looked at some Google Earth maps, people are using that parking. And I'm sure it's for the baseball field, but also for the tennis courts. But, Conservation has said, we got to get rid of that gravel parking lot. Is that pretty much it?
That's it.
So, so says Conservation, so shall it be. However, cars are parking on the outer radius of that access road. And it's not that I'm asking, could cars park there? They do. Is there a way, as part of this project, to delineate those six, eight, 10 available spaces along that outer perimeter of the road, which it appears is not interfering with the road? I mean, visually, when I was down there, and this is, this is not the right way to judge it. We'd need to actually have numbers. But visually, it looks, it looked to me like that road is wider in the turn. If that's the case, is there a way to then delineate at least those few spaces to help accommodate some of the use of the tennis and pickleball courts? Because, look, if you're going to play tennis and pickleball, you know, I'm sure you're, you want to get exercise. So, walking from the high school, it's, you know, it's not that big of a deal. But, if people are using that parking along the edge of the road, can we just delineate that?
I don't know the width of the road off the top of my head. So, one, it would depend on that, but...
I think we'd want to obviously check with the school and...
Of course.
Police department, fire department, whether that's a good idea. I mean, I think it could be argued that people shouldn't be parking there. We should have no parking signs.
It could be, but they are. And so, is it possible? Is it acceptable to all those departments? I mean, that would normally bear our process. Here's the width of the road, here's current use, does this work or not? And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. I'm just asking if that could be considered. And then my second question, and I only have two. And then my second question, and I only have two. At the last meeting, we talked about supplemental netting for the tennis courts. We actually talked about the current fencing, and it was impractical to raise that. And the idea is that all those tennis balls that end up in that wetland area, which conservation has noted, is it possible to have supplemental netting? Now, there's two examples that I would offer just to consider. One, one example is, um, uh, the football stadium, which is, I'd suggest how not to do it, because that netting in the football stadium is towering.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not the idea. But there is some modest height supplemental netting at the track area, and that's what I think is, you know, offered as a potential example for supplemental netting, uh, for the tennis courts. And, and again, like everything else, it's a question.
Yep.
Is that possible along that model of where the, the school already has modest height supplemental netting?
So that, um, that netting that they have up at the track, we also have some of that netting around this field, uh, for what it's worth. It's, obviously, you can't see it on the plan view, but it's called out with labels. That's safety netting, um, typically more specific to ball fields and not as much tennis courts. It's significant. It requires, uh, deep and large foundations for those poles to deal with the wind loads. Uh, the ones up at the track at this school, I believe, are twenty feet tall, and just for reference, that comes out to about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy dollars per linear foot. So it is a significant cost impact as well. Our issue with proposing netting at tennis courts like that is when people hit it up and over, they tend to do it pretty high, and netting will get more of it, but it's not gonna solve the problem. It's not gonna get all of it, um, and you're going to be spending much more money and, uh, excavating much more heavily, uh, significantly more disturbance for, for a potential diminishment in the number of tennis balls that make their way out, but not necessarily anything significant and worth that trade-off.
Well, I'm asking as a question.
I think that's my, uh, no, I understand that, and I, I think that's my alternatives analysis.
So is, is there anybody that does that well with the tennis? That's gotta be a bickeringest problem.
It's not that I've seen. Uh, standard tennis fencing is ten feet tall, and that's pretty much any outdoor court you go to will have that height, chain link fence around it. Um, yeah, it comes down to the location of where the courts actually are. In this case, we're just reconstructing them as is, so the location is predetermined for us. But, um, no, really, ten-foot fencing is, you know, I would say ninety percent of what we see. We did look into the potential for netting over top. Not really an option, I'm afraid.
Chair, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
This came up last time, um, Kyle, and I thought we might have somebody from the school here, but, um, it, um, it, it's not relevant to our limited site plan review, but it, but it is relevant to members of the community that I've been talking to is how, how is this project being paid for?
We do have folks...
Okay. Oh, Laura, thank you.
Hi, and Steve Nugent's here on behalf of high school too, so if you have specific questions about use or anything like that, he can answer them.
Great, thank you.
But as far as how is the project being paid for, it's part of our, um, capital plan that will be brought forward at this year's town meeting. The tennis courts are the CPC, so it's been divided technically into two projects, but we're doing all the permitting at once.
Okay, and it's, so it's not some kind of separate athletic improvement grant or anything like that? It's coming from the same...
No, it's our capital plan. Yeah, we, we have a field master plan that we did, uh, four years ago, maybe? And this is the second phase of that. We originally were gonna phase the high school, um, into two different projects, but then we realized it would be more beneficial to design it all at once and then, um, try to fund it all at once, 'cause it would cost less money. And so that's why we have a combination of CPC for the tennis courts and, uh, the capital plan for the rest of the work.
Well, can you just tell, tell for people who might be interested, what the field master plan is? How does that work?
Sure. So a few years ago, Gale Associates did, uh, a survey of all of our fields, um, met with users and, um, all kinds of stakeholders, came up with a plan. Uh, it's available on our website. It addresses every field in town. Um, and we laid out a plan for the first three years, uh, which this again is phase two. The next phase is supposed to be sharpeners, but that all depends on a lot of things, funding, funding in particular.
Right, but the idea is, we take, I mean, fields are an investment that we make for our town. It benefits, obviously, uh, all the people that use them. It also has benefits, just, you know, when people, people are looking to buy and sell in town. One of the things that they notice are playgrounds and fields and schools and things like that, so basically, over time, we, we, you don't wanna just do them as they're falling apart, and you wanna plan for them over a period of time, so that they're not all having to be budgeted for at the same time. So we came up with this long plan of, okay, we'll do this one first, and then this one, this one, and this one. So it's not like that this high school project is just coming up this year. It's been in the works, same way, and then, and we basically set aside funding kinda each year for what part of the fields, what part of the roads, things like that. That's just how we try to do it, buildings and fields.
Like we do our buildings. We design one year and then build the next, and that's how we got to this point. Last year, town meeting approved us to fund the design, um, and then we'll move forward, and then when we start budgeting for next year, we'll look at the plan and see if it's still feasible, or if anything has changed. It's very fluid. Um, we don't wanna get into a situation, um, like the chair said, of, um, we need to get a maintenance plan together for all our fields, and this is our first step in doing that. So if we start to, to refurbish the fields that we have, we can also, along with that, have a maintenance plan, um, so that we don't, they don't fall into disrepair and they can be usable. And there's also been, um, comments in the master plan. Uh, one of the things that we realize is we're not allowing our natural fields to rest, and so, um, this will help us with that, because you can get more use out of this field, and you allow other fields to be able to rest, so that they can be more useful.
Okay, appreciate all that. Appreciate the need to plan and invest in infrastructure. I'm just trying to understand, I guess, how it relates to the rest of the school budget, and, which has been at, at top of mind for a lot of our community members recently, especially.
Yeah, so it, the capital plan is completely separate from the school budget. It's completely separate from the town budget. Um, the capital plan was presented, um, back in January, I believe. Um, if that began, and then it gets rolled into the budget, and that budget is what's passed at town meeting. Um, but it's not, these, these are one-time expenditures. These aren't things that you would use to fund recurring expenses for anyone's budget, whether it be town or school.
And it's, it's, I mean, it does have an odd look to it when we're talking about funding for projects at a school at the same time, saying we don't have enough money for the schools. Um, so it is, there is a big, it does like just jump out at you. So it's important to kinda get those facts of where these things are coming from, what buckets they're coming from is helpful.
Yeah, we recognize that, and I appreciate, I appreciate you clarifying that.
Okay, great. Uh, and if more questions come up for you or for, for Steve, that would be great, so, uh, we may get to that.
And thank you for coming. Really appreciate it.
I had one question before we get, uh, we had talked about, um, comparisons with other locations. Any information on places that might be a good comp for the li...
For lighting examples?
Yes, exactly.
Yes, that is in our response package. Um, let me see here. Nope, not that one. This one. I'm not gonna remember exactly which number that was, but there we go. So, we got a list of a few fields here. This list is longer than what's shown, but these are all the ones within fifteen or so miles of this location. So you have Greater Lawrence Technical High School in Andover, Peggy Hannan in, uh, I actually don't know how to say that town's name.
Billrica.
Billrica. Penn Tucket Regional High School in West Newbury, uh, Redding Memorial High School in Redding, and Merrimack College in North Andover. And one other item of note down here is actually that Wellesley High School, though significantly further away and a longer field trip, that one was specifically designed to dark sky standards, so that, in all honesty, is the best example relative to what you'll be getting at this site, but it's, of course, a farther drive away. So these, in, you know, in the meantime, these make for good examples.
I, I know you don't want to, Merrimack may not be the best example, but the advantage we have is Merrimack was something we permitted, and we spent an inordinate amount of time trying to, you know, achieve the same result that we're, I think we're trying to achieve here. So I guess, could you put Merrimack a little bit in context of what you're gonna see at Merri, what you see at Merrimack versus what you're gonna see here?
There is a note here under Merrimack, which is that the actual lighting level requirements at colleges vary from what's required at high schools. So they are typically higher than a high school, and, uh, I can, we can try and get more details out of our light better.
I think, I think, so, uh, from the last time we did this and we went there, what I remembered is that the lighting definitely is brighter on the field, but I think the comparison is with the spillage, and the lights are really designed at Merrimack to focus on the field. And when you look out at those, they're like those walkways that are beyond the field, they're still dark. And, and, and then you're looking at the dorm windows and stuff like that and not seeing the reflections on that. I think that's the comparison. So the, the field itself will be brighter than what we would expect for these lights on the field, but the comparison is in how that light does or doesn't...
Spill over, and that really is the point, because that's, that's what we're trying to mitigate, so to the extent, are you saying in the end it's similar with the spillage, or...
I, I think they're designed in the same way. Yes. The, the lights, as I remember from when we went to Merrimack, the lights were designed to stay on the field, and I do remember like being behind it and seeing the field really well lit up, and, uh, dorms and even the pathways behind it not being lit up. And I think that's what it's designed to do. So I think you could, if you go there, you'd be like, whoa, looking at the field. The field is very bright.
Yeah.
Uh, you could be there midnight, and it's really bright. But the, the question is, the light spillage, that's the design characteristics that we would be looking at as a comparison.
So that was a number of years ago, not that long ago, but is it still comparable lighting equipment to what's proposed here?
It was designed and manufactured, those lighting systems, by the same manufacturer proposing to use here. Their technology has progressed, I assume some in those years, but this is from a list that they provided to us as examples of good cutoffs, so...
Thanks.
I remember being impressed by that, specifically how bright it was on the field and how dark it was off the field. But it, it's been a few years since we, we did that, but, um, you know, I don't know if they have any spring games or spring practices, but my guess is people could go over there and, and take a look.
Yeah, quite a bit. They have, just, it's just about every day, I think.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there are club sports out there.
They have, like lacrosse's already started and...
Yeah. Um, okay, all right. Uh, so let's go to some of the butter comments that we've gotten, um, by email, so we're gonna, they're all part of the record. Um, so I may read some. I may, um, do synopses of some, so that we can get answers to questions, okay? So first, I'm gonna look, and then we can take actual questions, comments from anyone who wants to add. Uh, so this is from Jason Bulo. I hope I pronounced that right. Um, all right, he had a bunch of points that he wanted to make and questions just he wanted to be clear on. Uh, so he said to help make sure I was clear, I'm sending a quick note to quickly list my comments and suggestions. Um, so one, number one was, he was curious if there could be shared the true need for adding these lights, so I think we did address that. And again, if there's more questions, if, if one people wanna have discussion on those, that's fine, but that was answered in that, um, uh, letter from the school, so we addressed that. Uh, could the planners look at scenarios around the lights and how those different scenarios would impact the light spillage? So I think we talked a little bit about that. Um, basically, I think you said you could lower the heights to eighty, but the plan is based on keeping them on the, in the same locations, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, usage plan. So let's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold that out. We're gonna ask for the, uh, Steve from the school to come up, but, but, uh, let me get all the school-related questions together, and we'll have you up and do all of them instead of doing them piecemeal. So, usage question, we're gonna come back to today, but we're gonna come back to that. Uh, could we have some examples of fields with the light specs? We just did that, so that's great. Uh, are there other mitigations that be, can be put in place to reduce spillage? Um, guards on the lights, different focal lenses, trees and shrubs. So I think we talked about the, the change of the fixtures. That was...
The change of fixtures, and in terms of guards, those systems are already built like that. The, the lighting fixture itself is encased with shielding on all sides, and, uh, you know, that's the intent of the design. There's not much more they can do on top of that.
Okay. Walkway path could be considered to be lit. That's a very good point, but I think it's outside the jurisdiction of what this particular plan is, but we can talk to the school about that. Light on sidewalk. Okay. Uh, analysis of the light intensity, so we saw that, so that was, uh, thank you for doing that. And then detail on the usage of pickleball. Um, and we, I mean, there are already tennis courts there, so I don't think we'll get too much into that. Okay, so, but we wanna go back to usage. Okay, so we'll go back to that.
I think that distinction with pickleball might be because of the difference in noise.
It is, it is, but I, I'm just thinking where those, that location is. I mean, it's, like, if it was like on the track, it, I'd say that's one thing, but where that is, I'm not really sure that that...
There's houses, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think if it becomes a problem, we can do it, or if those people wanna come in and talk to us, we can talk to them too. Uh, I know the new pit, the pickleball courts at McAvoy got those, um, noise protection. So I guess that's the question. Would there be noise protection for pickleball?
I do believe we are proposing it on the butter side. Yes.
Okay.
We have three hundred feet of sound barrier along that side facing access.
Could you say that again? I couldn't quite hear.
We have, uh, three hundred feet of acoustic sound barrier along the fence on that side of the courts.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's an issue. I was, I saw an article about pickleball on Martha's Vineyard, maybe? Oh, man. It was...
Players rally, or what's this?
No, it was anti-pickleball. It was, oh...
No, that's what I mean. Were the, like, were they rallying or the tennis players, uh?
No, it's the noise of the ball hitting the, hitting the paddle. It has a very distinctive dunk, dunk, dunk. And because it's not like tennis where you're like going baseline to baseline, it's like bam, 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 back and forth. Basically, people are, we're complaining about dunks all day long from eight AM to eight PM, so I get it. Um, okay. Has there been any, okay, this is from Kevin McCoy. Has there been any thought to using low-level portable as movable light on this field? If not, why? Is that a question for you guys or a question for the school?
I think from a, from a designer's standpoint, it's, it's not permanent. I think over time, it's gonna be significantly more cost and labor intensive and just simply won't achieve the lighting that is desired for a playable sports field for high school athletes.
Okay.
Is it also fair to conclude that with the higher towers, or not, they've been reduced from ninety to eighty, but the lights are more of an angle down, whereas portable lighting, it, it would not be as vertically down, and you'd get more spill?
Right, and I think, um, like I said, we posed the question of whether the light heights could be dropped down, whether there could be more poles, that kind of thing, to get the cutoff that we're looking for to meet dark sky requirements. Eighty feet is what they landed on. So yes, if we went down any shorter with a, with a temporary sort of structure, presumably, a spillage would become significantly worse.
Has there been any thought to loaded, low-level lights at the fire station as high school parking lots hide only two lights? If not, why? Maybe we can get more comment. I'm, I'm not clear on that. Okay, yeah, so, uh...
So at the extreme...
Oh, Kevin, come on. Why don't you come up, please? Just identify yourself, please.
Uh, Kevin McCoy, six seven six Osgood Street. Uh, I met with Steve a few days ago.
Yeah.
And we walked the site. I understand none of you have been able to make it out there, so I encourage you to, to get out there.
Well, we haven't gone formally, so we've, some of us have been out there, but what we're planning is a formal site visit.
Yeah, it was just an action coming out of the last meeting, and I was expecting it to happen prior to this, so. Understood. So what I, when I was talking to Steve is, if you look at that, if you can put a picture of the field up, instead of having it on the corners, having it on the extreme ends, so you'd have one where the fire station is and another one where the parking light is, you'd have the same design structure shining right down into the middle. And it would mitigate having four of these things in the abutters backyards with two, possibly at a 90-foot height. Perhaps the, the grill might need to be a little bit larger. Spill would be less of an issue. And it would, I think it would improve the, the atmosphere of the abutters when, when you're in your backyards.
Can we, can we just see that? I just want to confirm.
Yep.
I think I know what you mean, but I just want to make sure. So what you're saying is for here and there?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we can ask. I think, I mean, it seems like that those distances to here would be, seem like they would be pretty far, but.
Lighting technology is fantastic.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I, I mean, certainly worth asking what the. So the, obviously the things that need to be considered are the, whether the ground can handle that at those locations and whether the lighting would appropriately cover everything. Okay. I understand the question now.
And then one more point on the low level. I can appreciate the, the non-permanent nature. The sports, as I understood from Steve, the ball is 10 to 15 feet in the air a few times during the game, right? So low-level lighting, if it's six feet high, it's gonna capture 97% of what the intended use is going to be. All right? So I don't think it can be dismissed based on the sport and the quality of the sport. You have to understand the sport and understand the mechanics of the ball flight, which is really what you're trying to capture with lighting, to recognize will that work or not. I can appreciate the expense in the.
There's soccer fields, right? Can soccer, other stuff?
Yeah, soccer, lacrosse is what, field hockey.
I think soccer, okay. My experience with soccer is it goes higher than that a bunch, but, okay, I understand what you're saying. On the, okay, so low-level lights, we'll, we'll talk, have, are you aware of any kind of conversation? I'm not. About the lights kinda at the apexes of the curve?
I, I think my only comment on that would be if, if they could design it with two lights instead of four, they would.
Okay, well, let's ask.
We'll ask.
Okay, let's ask about that. So two lights, so we're gonna ask about two lights versus four. So let's ask about that, okay? Kevin goes on to say, he's read the Dover Amendment, issues about neighborhood character. So we'll deal with that. That's not, that's something we usually deal with as part of, of asking questions. It's just something we'll have to kind of think about when we make our decision. When will the plan for field usage be shared? So that's a question I'm gonna have Steve come up and answer. Okay. Okay, so that's from Kevin and Jennifer McCoy. They had a second one. Portable, I think this is, these are mostly the same. Okay, there's one part about noise. So we're gonna ask about usage and noise. The marching band hypothetical has been talked about, so we'll ask about that. And I'm glad that you were able to go and walk the field together. That makes, makes things, I think, a lot smoother. Okay, and then I have one from Barbara Widdon. Thanks us for having the discussion. She talks about safety accessing the tennis courts. As a former parent of a tennis player, that crossing the courts can be very difficult with the curve. She also mentions having spoken to Mr. Nugent, which is great, saying that converting the lower field from grass to turf in this particular field has a history of serving, because this particular grass field has a history of serving as a stopover for migrating geese, will often cover it with bird feces and make it unusable for a significant period of time. So she wanted us to know that, and that had come up. Okay, those are the comments. So why don't we get Mr. Nugent up to answer those comments, and then if there are additional questions or comments, we'll take them after that.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Why don't you introduce yourself, please?
Okay, Steve Nugent, athletic director at the high school and resident, 35 Holly Tree Lane in North Andover.
Wonderful. So I think the biggest question we have for athletics is, well, there are a couple, but the biggest one is usage. How is it gonna be used? How is it gonna be managed? When will the lights be on? When will the lights be off? How is that controlled? What will the noise levels be? I think there was no real concern with, you know, people playing soccer at 5:00 at night. There was concern with a marching band at 8:30, which is a pretty legitimate concern. So how can, how, what do we know is gonna happen? And how do we document for sure how that's going to be so that neighbors have some sense of control and some, so that their fears can be assuaged on that?
Right. So I've met or talked with most of the neighbors. There's one I still have not been able to connect with. And again, the, the goal of this is to be neighborly, right? We're trying to improve the quality of the opportunities we have, provide our student athletes with, and do it in a safe way and do it in a cost-effective way. This is, you know, a huge step for us as a, as a community, not just as an athletic department at the high school. So first things first, I think, you know, one thing in talking to Lori and Kyle and a lot of our members, they're trying to, you know, put this together. There doesn't seem to be any type of ordinance in North Andover that limits or prescribes when lights can be used. General rule of thumb in the stadium, you know, we typically try to have those off by 9:00 o'clock on the nights that we do use it. So a proposal that, you know, I, I would, you know, I've talked to a lot of the neighbors about would be that we put something together that we agreed to live with for a year and then revisit, you know, sit down and see if it worked. The idea on the table for me would be that, you know, we went Monday, Monday through Friday until 9:00. Again, it wouldn't be every night, but that would be the only days of the week it could be used. And we're talking six months out of the year, not 12 months out of the year. So really, the, the major time that we needed as a athletic community would be late August into early November and really just about now, as, as we're kicking off our youth sports and the high school sports are kicking off, somewhere in the mid-March to, to late or mid-June, wouldn't need it at all in the summertime, we wouldn't need it at all in the wintertime. So really, it would be probably less than six months out of the year, no weekends. And again, finding that sweet spot as far as a time when those lights would go off. How we'd use it? So right now, our, our, it's already been mentioned, our field hockey team plays at the upper turf in the fall. And we'll start those games as early as we possibly can, and 4:00 is usually the magic number for our varsity. The JV team gets on the field about 5:15, 5:30. And as you know, as we get into the month of October, at about 6:00, 6:05, it's a certain time. It just gets earlier every day. A lot of those games are being cut short. It's complicated by the fact that we're also charging these student athletes $400 to play out their first sport, which is in the fall. So to give them, you know, an, an equal access to an opportunity, and, and right now, we're trying to keep the marching band in the stadium. So we've got the marching band, three football teams, three soccer teams for the boys, three soccer teams for the girls. We're trying to keep them on the lower part of the, of the campus. So in the fall, that's where we would probably predominantly using it for our high school field hockey team and some youth sports predominantly in that time of the year would be youth soccer and youth field hockey.
Are these lights manual or automatic? Like, does someone have to turn them on and off every day, or are they, are they set to go on at 4:00 PM and off at 9:00 PM?
Usually it's a setting, but you can do either way, and a combination of both. They're programmable, but they can also be turned on and off manually.
Okay, so you, we could, if, if it was agreed that they go off by 9:00 o'clock, Mondays through Fridays, and they're not on on Saturday, Sunday, you could program as such. And then if there was a circumstance that required them to be on, someone from the school would have to turn them on.
Correct. And right now, in talk, Kyle talked about the advances in technology, the stadium lights that we have in Walsh that were put in back in 2004. We only can operate those manually. So, you know, one of the steps with, eventually with this, this multi-step process here would be to add that feature to the Walsh stadium lights as well. You know, there are no plans to put the band up top. I think that's one thing that I heard loud and clear. You know, I, I talked about the fact that we do have an amazing band and they host a competition every year. You know, my concession would be making sure the neighbors knew which day we were hosting that, and, and that's when we would possibly use the upper turf for the bands to, to warm up before they came into their, their part of the show. I promise not to play U2 and, up at the, up at the field. But I think there's a lot of things, we're just, again, trying to engage in a conversation where, you know, we're trying to be as neighborly as possible and, and accomplish this goal.
One of the things we heard, and it's partially being addressed, was that at track meets of kids, you know, going onto the neighbor's property, you know, using the bathroom on the, in the, in the woods area or just, you know, things like that, which are, you know, completely inappropriate. So I think the willingness to put up a fence is definitely helpful, but is there anything else that can be done? I don't know what the bathroom situation is during track meets and stuff like that, and this is somewhat outside the lights. But if we were designing the track, I mean, it would be nice to be able to do things to help with that.
That's a tough one, you know, and again, as, as a dad of, you know, three, three teenagers and, and, you know, the track coach at the high school still, you know, it, I don't know that it's just the track athletes. I think it's anyone who accesses the track at any time.
Yeah.
Whether it's a soccer game or somebody just walking.
Sure.
If they have to go to the restroom or bathroom, you know, even if there's a porta potty, which we have a porta potty that was dropped there yesterday, and it will, you know, we'll have two in a couple of weeks when we have our youth program, it'll be there through the summer. Even with those, sometimes people find it more convenient to, you know, jet off into the, to the nearest woods. That's something I think, you know, whether it's the fence and, and the signage, that, you know, I don't know that we can fully control that, but it's definitely something we're aware of and, and obviously not something we're proud of and would like to, you know, mediate.
Yes, extra, I mean, we're doing some extra signage, I think, might, might be helpful. Okay. So we have usage. So I mean, I think, things we've done in the past is we've done, you know, we've set timetables. Sometimes we've been hesitant to set, you know, certain hours because we like it to kind of, just kind of happen naturally. But I think this is one where we might set hours and say, report, report back to us in a year and tell us how it's been. And if we need to adjust the permit, you know, we can do that. That would be probably the inclination of what to do. So I encourage you to kind of keep talking if there's like consensus to kind of bring us to that, bring that to us so that we can kind of put it in the permit. And that way, everybody knows, you know, if it's in the permit, I think, and everybody knows what the times are, I think that will be, that will go a long way. Okay, other questions or things that we haven't addressed there? Okay, why don't you stay for a moment? Why don't we stick with if there are any school-related, usage-related questions or comments? Why don't we take those now while we have Mr. Nugent? And then if there are other comments, we can go into those after that. So does anyone have any other just usage-related questions or comments at the moment? The audience? Yeah. And you can come back for other ones. I just wanted, while we have them, let's keep them.
So Jason Bulo, 650 Osgood Street.
Yeah.
Thanks again for coming to the panel here to talk to you. We saw the letter that talked about a use plan that referenced a review that was done. Is there access to that review that we could take a look at?
The review or the?
No, there was, the first paragraph talked about a, a review has been done, but didn't really have any details in the letter about the use plan, right? Thinking that there's gonna be some sort of, a number of hours that we need to use our fields for and that this top track that to be lit in later hours is a clear need. I think that's the primary question.
Okay. Do we have an answer to that? Do we, is there?
So I think the, the document being referenced is the master plan that was done several years ago.
The field's master plan?
Right, for the town of North Andover, which I believe is available.
Hold on, let's see if I can pull it up now. See if I can find the location.
Can I clarify what letter are you referring to? Is it Mr. Nugent's letter?
Yeah, well, I don't know who wrote it, but it was the one that.
From the school department?
Yeah, it was not. Yeah, somewhere in that first paragraph. It talks about a recent review.
Yeah, so that is all in the master plan.
In the field's master plan. Sorry, it was different between the regular master plan, field's master. Okay, so if, I mean, I can email it to you if you want, but it's, if you, what I did was I just Googled "field's master plan, North Andover", and it's the first thing that comes up. It's on a Google Drive on, you just, and there's a PDF with the whole master plan. I don't know where in that document it is, but that's the field, that field's master plan.
Okay, I'll take a look.
Yep, and if it doesn't answer your question, let us know.
Okay, so I'm assuming, Steve, that it says we need 100 hours of practice time and that this, this design satisfies that 100 hours of necessary need.
This was one of the recommendations that came out of, I believe, the Gail study, based on all of our field's use. And something Lori mentioned earlier, just, you know, with so many fields and them already being overused, we don't really have a comprehensive maintenance program or care program to allow fields to sit and have a season off. And this was one of the first recommendations made from a field perspective on the master plan.
Oh, that's not the right one. When you go, the right one doesn't come up.
It kind of doesn't, no. It's kind of a question of supply and demand, right? There's a certain demand that we have as a town on our field space. I'm assuming then that all these fields, right, the, there's the stadium field, I'm not sure, I guess we call it the practice field next to the stadium field. That's being lit?
Eventually, it's, it's in this master request, but that's not part of the space right now.
Okay, I thought we saw that last month. And then the new kind of goose fields are being rebuilt. A whole bunch of new capacity comes online there as well, right? So the, the kind of the question is, how much field do we need? How does this balance against that? Is this overcapacity? Is it just meeting the capacity?
I can, I mean, I can look at this a little bit closer and get back to you, but I think we're, we're really meeting the need right now and allowing us to enter into a place where we could actually have a, a comprehensive maintenance plan where our treatment plan, that we can actually take care of all of our fields. I mean, the, the next phase of this was to, to, you know, if money wasn't an issue and time was an issue, the Sharper Pond, Sharper Pond fields were all part of another step towards, you know, trying to get us back into a place. Another part, not just, not just field use, but also the equity use. Our softball team has never been on campus. That was one of the, one of the goals, whether it was Title IX or just, you know, a guy, you know, us as a community caring about our, our girls as much as the boys. The boys have always been on campus with our baseball field. This adds a softball field on campus, so it, it allows us to have an equitable distribution of the field as well.
Okay, and then I think from a use perspective, you talked about, somebody mentioned that this is for youth sports and high school sports only?
Oh, it would be, I think for me, I, the opportunity to have now, whether it's an adult soccer over the hill, maybe, or other opportunity, lacrosse, you know, other, you know, opportunities to, whether it's rent or, or allow usage, for sure. I mean, the goal would not be, again, we're, the number one responsibility for me as the athletic director is to take care of our high school team. Second would be our youth teams that are run through our youth programs in North Andover. And then third, if there's field availability after that, you know, what limited opportunities we have, and we can generate some revenue, that would be an opportunity as well. But again, I haven't done a cost analysis on that part yet.
It was actually a little more difficult to find. I did find it. I actually just emailed it to you, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, you should have it, but it is, it is on the website, but it is a little more, it was a little more difficult for me to find.
The file or the analysis?
The file, the field master plan file.
Okay.
So it should be.
I have to find the analysis within there.
You'll have to dive into it. I haven't had a chance to go through the 188 pages, but it's in, hopefully it's in there somewhere.
Thanks. Okay, appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay. Any other usage questions, comments? Okay. Any other design, lighting, any, any other comments, questions?
Just real quick.
All right, come on up.
I can come up real quickly and I get it. So.
Introduce yourself, please.
Joan Koulash, 55 Brad Street Road.
Thank you, Joan.
This is being partially funded by community preservation money, right?
I believe it was said the tennis courts, the tennis courts are.
And so that will be available to the public, right?
What?
Yeah, okay, got it, thanks.
So, yeah, see, we should have a CPC warrant in, in a few weeks being brought before us.
Yeah, that is one, I mean, we're gonna vote on all our projects Thursday night, but that's one of them.
So this Thursday, there'll be a vote on all the CPC projects, which is one of them. That'll come before this board, it'll come before the select board for recommendations, but there'll be a package for all that. Turf cannot be funded by CPC, that's, we've all learned that. So just the tennis courts.
No, I was, I was just more concerned that it would be available to the public because of the CPC.
Oh, the tennis courts, yes.
Yes, so we're all.
Got it. Got it.
Thanks.
Yep, got it, yep. They are, I mean, those tennis courts are open to the public now, right?
Yeah. I think that's also why pickleball's being...
To as an added public benefit because the, the public wants, the public wants pickleball.
People want pickleball.
Have you guys seen that, the facility in Danvers on 114?
Yeah.
It's giant. It's insane. Okay. All right, any other, yep?
My name is Lynn Langton. I live at 10 Suri Drive.
Yeah.
I do want to thank you all for volunteering, and I did spend the time to listen to the entire meeting of when this project was presented. So I do want to thank you for listening to the citizens of this town when we had town meeting about the artificial turf versus the national, the natural grass, because I heard all your questions, and so I want to thank you for raising that issue, because I am 100% against the artificial turf. And so therefore, I am wondering how, I, I understand that there now was the letter of intent that it, the artificial turf was put in there for usage, and I am wondering how we can have a bid for natural grass. I think that the health of our children maybe comes before usage, and I think the health of our town and its waterways and the environment also should be heard in this. There was a question about runoff, and it was stated that, oh, well, there's the 12 to 18 curbing around it, but the curbing is flush. It is not going to hold in any of the crumb rubber that's going to escape when there are torrential rains due to the climate. So that is something to look into. There was a question raised about what happens to this turf every 10 years when it gets trucked away and we have to replace it. Do not take comfort into whatever's said, because that, that toxic crumb is going somewhere, and it's going to affect somebody else down the road. And if it gets recycled, then it goes back into somebody else's waterways and somebody else's land. 130,000 square feet of artificial turf is going to be added with this project. I don't want that. I want natural grass. I would like to see bids out for natural grass if it's not too late on this.
Well, no, there's no bids being done at all. It's just whether or not the plan comes to us with grass or with, with turf, so we can only approve, we can approve a plan, but bidding doesn't happen until, so let's say that they, this is just for permitting, right? So that they get a permit, so that means that they're allowed to build. Then they have to go to the town meeting and get funding. If there's funding, then it goes out, and there's, gets approved funding, then it goes out to bid. So the bidding doesn't happen until after permitting and funding.
Okay, so the plan that was presented then, I heard, is it going to be $3.5 million?
I'm not sure if we got a price tag here.
Okay, and that comes from the capital funds, and do those need to be approved at town meeting?
Every, it, from what...
Or are they already approved for this project?
None of the funding has been approved yet.
Only the design.
Only, right. The design has been approved, funding for the design. So they're going through the permitting at town meeting, there would be, as I understand, Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, there's two separate articles that would cover the funding. One is in the capital improvement budget, and one is in the CPC funding for the tennis courts. So those two things combined would be the locations that would fund this project, both of which need to be voted on at town meeting in separate articles. Is that right?
Okay, I understand. I didn't hear anything about the grooming requirements being done every two to four weeks with artificial turf. What does that entail, and is that also cost included in the project?
I'm, I'm not sure what...
Am I directed to respond?
If, if anyone can, I'm not sure what that, what grooming is or what that, I'm not sure what that is, so...
Yes, these fields...
If you could educate us, that would be great.
These fields do require grooming every two to four weeks during heavy use is sort of the, the boilerplate standard time. And what that is, is actually basically like a large rake, you can think of it like that. It has tines that, that push down, and so those, it's driven over the field with a small vehicle. Those tines kind of lift up the fibers, stand them upright, and infill over time will, will mat down, especially after rain events. It, it doesn't move off the field, it actually gets further matted down into the system. So part of that grooming is actually to lift that back up and get it into a safe, playable, impact attenuating surface, again, for use. That, in addition to player safety, the point of that grooming is longevity as well. That's the best way to get the longest life possible out of these products, and, you know, it's, it's part of the warranty requirements, actually, that, that these fields are groomed in the recommended intervals.
Mr. Nugent, do you know, is that something that, I assume that's done at the high school field?
It is done, it's not done, I mean, it's, it's probably about every four to five weeks right now, currently.
And who does that?
Me.
Okay.
I do it, and, and a couple of the custodians will take turns.
Okay, so that's something that is part of job requirements of people that are already on the job?
Yes.
Okay. One, and then, yeah, Kate, and then Peter, yeah, go ahead.
I mean, just, and in response to the commenter's thoughts, the design review did not consider an alternative to, to artificial turf. It, that was in, that, it was limited to that choice.
The, the design, well, yeah, we were hired to design a turf field, correct?
And, thank you. And then I also wanted to note that, and thank you for putting in any, somebody entered in the record, an EPA report, a very comprehensive scientific report about artificial turf and the potential exposures that could come from it, so appreciate that.
Yeah, that, that report is actually specific to crumb rubber as well. Artificial turf and crumb rubber are the same system we're proposing here. That report is included in the packages to this board as well as to the Conservation Commission, and that is the result of a five-year study that was just wrapped up by the EPA in April of this past year.
Thank you.
Copy, yeah.
I have the same question or comment for clarity, that this design is only considering turf, not grass, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So I just mentioned that for clarity, and with respect to the EPA report and who it has been provided to, are you aware, or perhaps Lori, whether or not that EPA report on artificial turf has also been provided to the Town Board of Health?
Not as part of this permitting process to date. There's no reason it can't be, but it's been provided to this board and the commission.
I would...
What's the conservation...
I'm sorry?
I'm not sure. They, I can't hear a lot to them.
If, if conservation is waiting on anything from health, yeah, that seems like a, I mean, seems like a good idea.
Yeah.
To, to Board of Health, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. And, yeah, thanks.
Okay, great.
Okay, so I, I understand then that when this goes to town meeting, that there's going to be two portions, that obviously there'd be the CPA funds that we can approve or not approve, and then there'll be this capital project that we can either approve or not approve.
Or amend, yeah.
Or amend. Okay, so...
Right, so, because the capital, the capital budget is not just this.
Right, right, this is one item in the capital budget.
Right, so let's say it has 10 items, we can approve the whole thing, we can disapprove the whole thing, or you can, someone can make, if there's a proper amendment to be proposed, can amend and say, I want more money or less money. Obviously, if you're, you know, suggesting on this, it can be regarding how, what's funding for particular line items if you wanted to.
Okay. All right, so there's no way to separate out then what the cost of artificial turf versus natural grass would be, and that wouldn't be considered under this purview?
It's not, it's certainly not under our purview, what the costs, I mean, are you talking about, so there will be, the capital plan, the capital budget will have, we're going to spend X dollars to build this. That doesn't, we're not, it's just for the construction. It's not for long-term maintenance or any of those kind of things. So if there's a question of what the costs are, you can see what the costs are for putting in the turf now as part of this project, that'll be, or the project itself will have an amount. I'm not exactly sure what the cost is.
Because I don't think this project would have any problem if it didn't have the artificial turf, is what I'm suggesting, and I understand that the train has already left the station, but I'm just voicing that opinion right now.
No, it's, it's appreciated, I mean, I personally have a different opinion on turfs, but it's, it's appreciated that you come and you speak well and, and that it's important to you to kind of do that. We want to answer the questions as best we can. I mean, I think the project was proposed as turf for some of the reasons stated in the letter of what the benefits thereof, and you're providing a counterpoint of, okay, you may be able to provide more playing time and more use, but there may be a cost, and that should be something that's considered.
Right.
And understood.
Okay, and I do want to think, I do really love how the field is moved up and it gives more breathing space for our natural habitats. I think that's a really good idea. One other idea that I did want to propose, that I didn't see in the plans, is I know that we had some huge amount of money from Amazon, I don't know, $600,000 or $800,000 to plant trees. I would love to see trees lining the whole drive up to the high school. If we had natural grass fields, it'd be nice if the trees were around the field so they could provide shades for parents watching the games. Just, that's my field of dreams.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it, okay, great. Other comments? Jason, did you have something else? Yeah, come on.
Super quick ones, right? So we, you talked about the lighted path and whether or not we could consider that in the design.
Lighted path outside.
Right, in the corner near the fire station.
Want to pull that up?
Yep. One second.
Be in turn four, I guess, that corner.
Over here?
Yeah.
So, is that on the, in the field, or is that outside on the street?
It's outside the field, yeah, it's a walkway that goes past the track up to the fire station.
It's actually an emergency access road.
And it's unlit. It's very, you know, I guess the idea is that it's super dark in the wintertime, and we know there's a lot of kids kind of walking through that area, so it's just a idea to...
This?
Yeah, exactly.
So is that on school property?
Yes.
Yes, it is?
It's basically an emergency access road from the fire department.
Oh, yeah.
It's a sidewalk for kids.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm sure it can be raised, but it's, it's sort of outside the scope of our project, because like everything is designed for here.
Okay.
Who would be the right person to...
The school department.
Yeah.
That, that would be a separate project that'd have to be discussed through the school department, because we don't have the funds of this project to do lighting along that walkway. But I'm sure that you spoke with them, maybe there's a plan, they could do, you know, on the ground lighting or similar to what was proposed for the racflings.
Yeah, I mean, if anything, yeah, you would do low baller lighting if you were going to do that.
But that would be entirely different.
So, but then, that'd be the school department?
Okay.
And then if we could go back to the, the, yeah, the plan, yeah, that one, yep. So can you just mention again where that fence goes down to on the, I guess that'd be the southern side?
Right here?
Yeah. How far is that go? Is that where it stops?
Yeah, we're showing it stopping there, because it's right, oh, let me zoom in. Right here, if you can see this line, this is the 50-foot no-build zone of the wetlands. So competing interests here, with the Conservation Commission in mind, you know, we don't want to propose any more development, any development at all in the 50-foot no-build zone that we don't need. And with that in mind, that's why it terminates here, especially accounting not just for that buffer, but for the fact that there is a good 40, 50 feet of thick vegetation from that point to the actual property lines beyond that, which act as their own deterrent.
Yes, I think the, the two concerns, I think, that we've brought up as far as people using the woods for relieving themselves. One was on the McCoy side on turn three, and then the second was essentially what we're not guarding down below, and those, I don't think those neighbors are here tonight. Where your hand is, that's, I think that's my property. And then the property below, I think, was one of the other properties that had a, kind of a lot of this action happening, kind of in their woods. So it's kind of just a question on where this fence is going to stop, because maybe it solves half the problem, maybe it solves none of the problem.
It's, I mean, I get it, I mean, some, the problem, like you said, is, is we don't necessarily want to build a fence in the wetland either, so it's, that's a problem in itself, so it's, it's trying to figure out how much of the problem we can deal with. I mean, the other thing is, we can build part of the fence, see how it goes, and see if, if it does solve the problem. If it doesn't solve the problem, we can always come back and try to look at that, which I'd probably rather do than building in the wetland to start.
Yeah, are there options for signage down there?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's signage, should be all sorts of signage.
I mean, just, maybe just a comment, there, there is an existing fence there, and I'm just curious, right, if I'm not mistaken? And I'm just curious where the existing fence ends today.
They didn't pick it up on the survey, because I believe it's probably closer to the actual property line, so they didn't make their way through this vegetation. I can't say for sure.
Do you know, does it go all the way down to your property?
Yeah, it goes down and past, but I think it's dilapidated. It's like folded over and down. I know the kids can walk through. My kids want to walk through it all the time, right?
Right.
But I tell them no.
Yeah, well, I'm guessing is, is, I guess the existing conditions, is the existing conditions with the fence go through a no-disturb zone right now?
I think it does.
It probably does.
Yeah.
When it was built, when, you know, the school was built way back when.
So I guess my maybe question for ConCom is, is that if something's existing there, like we can just replace it?
Nope. No, there's no non-no disturbs, not like grandfathering.
Okay.
Good question.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then one last final question.
Yeah.
I know when Kevin came up, we talked about putting one light in each of the end zones, essentially.
Yeah.
And, you know, those lights would be a lot closer to the field if you, if you put them probably in those end zones. But putting two, you know, I know we said one maybe in each end zone, you know, I think last meeting, I was just asking for some, some options, some scenarios that were run. Didn't seem like we really ran any scenarios. Could we look at two in each end zone, one in each end zone, just look at a couple different options, so we understand kind of what that impact of those might be? Right, so instead of one in the southern end, one in the northern end, maybe it's two less intense lights in the northern and the southern end. I'm not sure if those were looked at.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll run that by our, you know, in addition to the other lighting action items we have here. I do just want to point out right off the bat, we can't put the lighting in these, the areas themselves. Those were just resurfaced this past summer with new track surfacing. Not only do we not want to destroy that investment, but this is the high jump area, which requires full use of that area without vertical obstruction, and same down on this end, we have pole vault on both those. So getting the light within that area while still providing the required seven feet of So getting the light within that area while still providing the required seven feet of safety on either side of the pole vault runway will not necessarily be an option. But again, I don't want to, I'm just adding that context, and we'll float that to our lighting design.
Are there stands or viewing stands?
Just these portable bleachers, as far as I know, or temporary.
Portable?
Yep.
Okay, so then that's, you know, if we wanted to, if the lights were on the ends, you could move them, you could move those to somewhere where they could also see, but they don't have to be there.
Potentially.
Right, because I was thinking the lights also possibly there because there's, so people can see in, and see in the stands at, you know, night, you want to be able to be lit too, so, okay.
Those can be moved, if they're temporary, then it doesn't matter.
Thanks. Okay. All right, anything else? Let's get in the back and then join you.
Hello, I'm Lee Blue Mel, fifty-four Brad Street Road in town. I just wanted to add my voice to Lynn Langdon's, you heard me last night, or whatever that was last week, sorry. Just that I too wish that this was a proposal for natural grass fields, and that I think, you know, we're at this moment of time where people are thinking this is going to add to the value of our town, but I don't, I don't really think that's the case. I think unfortunately turf creates heat islands, which really add to the temperature, and they end up reducing field playing time when, as the temps get hotter. PFAS from the crumb rubber is obviously not good for our water systems, and it's really easy to go online and just check out the list of towns and where their PFAS levels are at. North Andover is really good right now. We're at two-point-two, Chelmsford's twenty-five, Bolton's one-eighty-two, Acton's ninety-three. But PFAS are endocrine disruptors, which means they disrupt hormones and that children and youth are particularly, you know, it's particularly bad for children and youth to have their hormonal systems being impacted. And then the other thing is just, you know, microplastics in the human body. It just, it's interesting to me how many people haven't heard about this, but I keep hearing things on the radio or whatever. And I'm just going to read you the little teeny AI summary on my phone. There's lots of medical stuff too, though. "They're less than five millimeters in diameter, they found in various parts of the human body. Organs and systems affected: lungs, heart, brain, liver, kidneys, placenta, blood, reproductive organs. Microplastics can enter the body through ingestion or inhalation. Once inside the body, microplastics can accumulate in various organs and tissues. They can also travel through the bloodstream and be transported to different parts of the body. Potential health effects, long-term effects are still being investigated." However, some concerns include inflammation and oxidative stress, whatever that is. Immune system dysfunction, endocrine disruption, again, hormones, cancer and respiratory problems. If you look at the AMA, there's a medical thing, it's talking about microplastics and the impact on human health, including cardiovascular disease, low male fertility, cancers, metabolic disorders, attention deficit hyperactivity disorder, and fertility issues. So I just bring this up because I think as this kind of knowledge kind of starts to seep its way into society, people are going to be, I know there's, I know this project is, as like Lynn said, it's on the train track, but I think in ten years from now, when this thing is being replaced and we're trying to get rid of the stuff, nobody, nobody is going to be going for plastic turf with crumb rubber. It's going to be like, like I said the other week, I think it's just going to be just like smoking. Everybody's just going to be like, oh, my goodness, what were we doing to our kids? So that's just my opinion.
So I get that. I'll say a couple of things. I mean, that's why we asked for information and got this EPA report from, you know, the Environmental Protection Agency at least.
Which is specifically about the PFAS or the PFAS from the blades or the PFAS from the crumb rubber or the microplastics?
I mean, having looked at this issue many times, we can definitely find studies that say one thing or the other. So we trying to get something from a, you know, significant government agency that at least, at least to date, is supposed to protect the environment.
Yeah. I guess, I'm just asking, is that report, is it about PFAS in the grass blades? Is it about PFAS in the crumb rubber?
It's about crumb, it's about, I mean, you have to look, I'm not going to summarize it because I don't think I would do a very good job of it. But it's crumb rubber turf and its effects. I'll also say that these are, I mean, everyone has to make decisions for their own families and kids about where they'd let their kids play and things like that. So, I mean, I think to the extent that we're, if it's approved and it is turf and people feel strongly enough not to play there, then that is their prerogative. But for me, having played on turf versus graph, having kids played on turf versus graph, if it's perfect grass, I'd prefer that. Otherwise, the turf is generally much better for injuries and other things. So there's definitely concerns, and I'm glad you're raising them, and we can certainly discuss them if, when it comes to funding. But we do have, that's why we ask for evidence, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and I just want to make the distinction, there's the whole PFAS concern, there's also the microplastics concern. And I don't, and I think the microplastic concern is maybe getting more knowledge in these days. And you wouldn't believe how many women smoked when they were pregnant. My ex-mother-in-law was a chain smoker while she was pregnant. We wouldn't do that now, most of us.
That's true. Okay, any other, yep, Joan, last one.
Well, I want to make sure.
Oh, no, 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 if there's more, I only saw you, so.
Yeah, you only saw me. No, but everybody only sees me, right? First of all, I hope I'm not going to sound patronizing when I say to you folks, I am highly impressed with how you're willing to listen to these suggestions and how you get into the level of detail to make things safer for the neighbors. I do also want to echo what Lynn said and also Lee Blue Mel. They are not the only people who are concerned about artificial turf and the dangers of it. The European Union ban on microplastics includes crumb rubber artificial turf. They have banned it. Boston's Mayor Wu has ordered that no new artificial turf be installed in city parks because of the PFAS. The Children's Environmental Health Center at Mount Sinai Hospital in New York has strongly discouraged the installation of artificial turf fields because of the cancer risks, children and adolescent health, and parents sounding the alarm about their own children's illness. The US Women's Soccer Team, I know you said that it's safer with artificial turf, but they put up a big fight not to use artificial turf.
Right, because, but they get the best grass fields in the world.
They get the best grass fields in the world, and we need to work to get the best grass fields in the world as well, right?
Joan, I would love that, but we can't afford to pay for the things that we have now, like teachers, and which is frankly probably more important than fields, even from someone who's a big sports fan.
But I think that the health and safety of everyone.
I agree, but I'm just saying that the fields are in pretty bad condition.
They are, and I think we, I think that we can work to make it safe. The National Football League players do not want to play on artificial turf. I also want to bring up the heat issue that Lee just brought up. On hot summer days, the temperatures for artificial turf, and especially with crumb rubber, can be over a hundred sixty degrees. When I heard that, I thought, do I believe that? Do I not believe it? Lynn Langdon and I went this summer on an eighty-three-degree day and actually took the temperatures of the fields in North Andover, and it went as high as a hundred and fifty-two degrees. That is not safe for our kids. And then the heat islands. Also the cost. Artificial turf is expensive, not only to our health, but to our pocketbooks. Besides the upfront cost at a minimum, as you probably already know, of every fifteen years and often eight to ten years, the turf has to be replaced at high cost. The scientists at the Toxic Use Reduction Institute at the University of Lowell conducted an extremely, extremely extensive study comparing the cost of grass to artificial turf. And when you consider all the maintenance and the replacement of the turf, almost to a study, it was the grass that was cheaper. So again, this I know is not in your purview, but I feel that we need to at least be on record of continuing to say these things. And I know that you, you're not in our, in my camp at least, but I do appreciate you listening.
And I get it. I mean, again, everything, statistics are interesting because yes, it's probably cheaper dollar-for-dollar to use.
And health for health.
Well, I don't know, but right, health is one question, and then economics is another one that you brought up. It is probably, it may be cheaper, but you also get more use out of the field. So if you actually, depending on how you measure it, if you measure it per use, the turf is way cheaper. If you, and then again, are you using, are you then charging to use the field and making money off them because you can use them more? I think the health is frankly the stronger argument.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe I could just quickly just read the, just the first paragraph in the conclusion of this EPA report.
Sure.
So it, the conclusions, the top line of the conclusion of the EPA report says in general, "The findings of the entire playing field's proportion of the FRAP activities, both tire crumb characterization part one..."
Could you just read just a little more?
Yep, and, and, no worries. "And the tire crumb exposure characterization part two combined support the conclusion that although chemicals are present, as expected in tire crumb rubber, exposures can occur, they are likely limited." And they go on to say, "Only small amount of organic chemicals are released from tire crumb rubber into the air through emissions. For metals, only small fractions are released." And I guess the net, and they say no differences in pH metabolites in urine, which would be indicative of any sort of endocrine-related things. So this is from the EPA report, right? And I would say has a much broader jurisdiction, much more thorough than we can, and that's, this is effectively what we would lean into on assessing these things. So I just want to say that, you know, just in conclusion, based on the EPA report, they didn't seem that everything is negligible as with respect to exposure, and I encourage everyone to read this.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I think the biggest thing for us is to listen, to get education, to ask for expert opinions. Again, it is a little bit of field, but I think it's perfectly right to kind of have the discussion and kind of tee it up for town meeting, and if people want to discuss it there, obviously within the discretion of the moderator. But I think the, having these discussions where we all kind of want to, what's best for the town, the kids, and trying to figure those things out when we're not scientists is, you know, and we're working on budgets and we're working with different, kind of different things, is important and good to have those, at least have those conversations. So thank you for providing your opinions and kind of input and information.
I have two questions.
You already had two questions.
I know, well.
All right, two more questions, Peter.
I have two more.
Okay.
The first is to Steve, perhaps. Do you know where or how the decision was made to go with artificial turf for this project instead of natural gas? And the reason, grass, the reason I'm asking is...
Natural gas is too expensive these days.
The reason I'm asking is for context, which is what we're doing here. Was it in the field's master plan or some other point that that decision was made?
It's definitely, I believe it's in the field's master plan, but it's, aside from that, it's a conversation. Listen, I've worked at and coached at the high school for almost thirty years now, so, you know.
Get the hang of it?
It's just, it's been a conversation every year, and the only example I can point to is right now. Our baseball and softball teams are practicing either in the gym or on the turf after the, or with the lacrosse teams. They're, they're both, the baseball team is traveling for five scrimmages, all to turf fields, so that they can get on and play ball, you know, for the first two weeks of the season. So, you know, if we had a turf field, they'd be at our place, it'd be a lot more cost-effective for my department and not putting them on a bus and hosting. You know, and I, you know, I have done a little bit of work, and I know that, you know, there are no grand illusions or expectations for us to be renting out our facility, but Great Alliance, you know, they're bringing in over two-hundred thousand dollars a year renting out their baseball softball facility. Now, I'm not proposing that we do that right away, but it is a major source of revenue for that particular school district. So for sure, it's something that's down the road, but initially, the decision has always been, if we could get on these fields earlier and stay on them longer and get more use out of them, it's going to help everybody.
So it's usage that has driven this. So my second question is to the board. Would the board consider asking someone from the Board of Health come here or not on this question?
I mean, it doesn't hurt to do it, but we're straying well past our scope. We really are, and I think at some point we've got to say, this is a topic for town meeting. This is a topic for the school committee. This is...
That's why it's a question.
Yeah, so I don't mind doing it, but I really think this conversation should be in a different venue, just my opinion.
I can't, I can't handle it.
So I will say that when we did the permit for the medical complex, that there was a condition that the turf had to meet all state, federal, and local guidelines, and it had to be signed off on by the Board of Health. That was a condition of the permit.
I especially liked that last part, if we could consider that here, and if that would be an approach to keep it within our lane.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
To make that a condition.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, with all due respect to our Board of Health, I mean, this is a big question with, I think we're better off looking for more expert reports. The Lowell report, which I've read before, is a good, you know, solidly-backed report, the EPA report again. Those are the things I think we're looking for. I think that's...
And if the commenter wanted to submit that report to us, I think...
Yeah, I know, it's been, it's been, I've seen it in other projects. Okay, great. Anything else for tonight from, from audience comments? Okay, site view, I think, would be a good thing.
Yeah, I think so.
So we have to just, the Dover bylaw projects are supposed to be decided within ninety days. That's the middle of April. I'd like to still try to see if we can stick with that timeline. If we need to ask for more time, great, but I'd like to have this done before town meeting if we can. So I'm thinking next week, if people are available.
At night or?
Well, I think, I think it should be not at night-night, but close, because we need to be able to see, and we're not going to have the lights, right? So that, but it needs to be, we need to be able to see. I was thinking like five-thirty, six o'clock maybe, so that we could get...
On Tuesday? Like Tuesday?
Whatever day works for people.
Maybe I can make a request. Is there any possibility we can float balloons where the light fixtures would be?
I can ask.
Do you have the football field polls as a reference?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not in the same place, but...
I think, yeah, I'm...
So next Tuesday is election, election day for us in the, it'll be in the high school gym.
Oh, that would be a little...
So we'll all be there?
Yeah.
I will, I'm at work.
Uh, let's do a different, yeah, and the two uncondested races. But there will be, traffic-wise is probably not the best. How about Wednesday, the twenty-sixth? Are people generally available?
Works for me.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I don't, could someone be there Wednesday, the twenty, oh, is there an event or anything going on?
Just if we're talking, we're talking all parts of campus or just the up-top part, the upper campus?
I mean, I'd like to see the track and, I mean, the track, the baseball field and the tennis courts.
There'll be practices, there'll be nothing that we can't...
Walk around.
Walk around, exactly.
Okay, now, which I actually, I think practices might even help.
And will the lights come on on the, the existing lights will come on?
Down below, most likely it's our lacrosse, youth lacrosse uses that after the high school team, so I'd have to check the schedule. But I can send a message back to you, but either way, we can put them on.
Five-thirty too soon for people? Can people be there at five-thirty?
Yeah, I could probably swing by.
Yeah. Okay, so let's do five-thirty. Let's, let's, why don't we start at the track? Are you folks able, if anyone says five-thirty, okay?
Can I just clarify? I don't, I don't know if the engineer of record is expected to be at the site visit, but that is the evening of the Conservation Commission hearing.
At what time?
Seven.
Okay. Yeah, I should have asked that. Is there a day, better day that you, someone would be available?
I would have to look at my absurd calendar, but I think if we're trying to do it next week, is that the idea?
Yes.
I think either Friday or, well, actually Tuesday would be better, if that works, the twenty-fifth.
Their town election at the high school?
Oh, sorry, Monday.
Monday, the twenty-fourth. Yes? Okay, Monday, the twenty-fourth at five-thirty.
At, where are we meeting?
We'll meet at the track. Meet at the track. And that way we can also do, because I think the, because the track and the lighting is probably the top issue, so that way we can meet with people there and kind of see where things are in terms of the neighbors. I think I would like that.
And it won't, it won't be dark.
No.
It's dark. It sunsets at seven, it looks like.
Yeah, still light when it's coming here. Five.
For what it's worth, I wouldn't want to utilize the existing Walsh lights as a reference because those are very old fixtures that are actually proposing to be replaced.
Okay, great. We're going to continue this hearing until the site visit. So for everyone, if anyone goes to the site visit, site visit is for the purpose of observation and for seeing the area. We do not have a discussion, so because it's not recorded, not on the record, it will be a public, this will be open to the public, so anyone, members of the public can come and walk with us and listen, but we're not going to have a discussion, we're not going to answer questions at that. If you have a question or something comes up, you can ask it when we come back into our meeting the next week, okay? All right, so continue until site visit March 24th, 2025. And then we'll be back here for the hearing April 1st.
Sorry, quick question.
Yes.
Site visit, are we able to point out the areas of the fence that we were describing that are fallen over and overgrown?
Yep.
I get, no discussion, but that we can point out some of the areas that we've been stuck in. Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep, yep. It's for us to learn and observe, so yes, we would like that. Yeah, show us where your properties are, show us where the fences, where the problems are, educate us.
We'll have the fence to meet you over there.
Okay.
Just kidding.
Okay, okay. All right, very good. Okay, we are good on that one. Okay, great. So that is continued to April 1st. All right. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Steve, thank you, Lori. All right, annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles, accessory dwelling unit, limited site plan review, family suite, historic barn overlay, flood plain. Any questions, comments on any of those?
Accessory dwelling unit, I heard from.
Okay, so accessory dwelling units, let's talk about that. Go ahead, Peter. All right, well, wait a second.
Just, just that I, the comments I've heard about the ADUs is, one, if somebody has an existing structure, concern about how much flexibility they might have to make use of it. And two, the square footage limitation, let's say it's a garage that they want to make use of. Is it square footage of livable area or gross square footage? Using a garage as an example.
Uh, well, it's gross floor area, but there's.
Or the livable space, is that right?
I believe so, but I'd have to double check the definition. Hold on a sec.
You've gone over this with a funny tooth coat. Do you know the answer?
No, I would think it would be livable space because.
I mean, especially if it's a garage, because if there's still cars below, that's not part of the apartment.
Correct, that wouldn't count, no, it's, it's of the unit.
Of the unit.
The gross floor area of the unit.
Fine, I think that answers the concern that I heard. And then the mechanism, let's say somebody has an existing structure, it's not an ADU, but they really like it to be. What process would we have to say, okay, we understand you're not building something for an ADU, you have an existing structure, how would we try to not accommodate, but take into account whether or not an existing structure could be used?
So, and is it attached or detached?
Well, I mean, I, I don't know.
So, no, but if it's attached, then it would, you would just draw up the plans and submit it to the building inspector and say, does this qualify as an ADU? If it does, build away. If it's detached, like a separate garage, then you would have to file for limited site plan review and come before us for the detached ADU permit.
Which could be an advantage.
Yeah.
And getting back to your original point, size is going to matter on that too, right? So if it's a, it's a existing structure that's 1,200 square feet, you can, ADUs only allow 900, so then you're toeing into possible variance or I.
Well, you wouldn't be able to get for the size, but you could just only build 900 square feet of it as the.
You're tearing apart of your existing structure.
Obviously, what's going to go, wouldn't you just shut up and not do anything? I mean. I'm, I'm sorry.
You'll just shut up and not do anything.
And ask for a permit after the time.
This is my whole issue with ADUs at the beginning is we've got lots of them and they work okay, you know?
Yeah, probably would fall into the family suite.
Depends on who's using it again. That's why we have that sunset, it's, if you want to do it now. Okay, good question. Okay, uh, can I get a motion to approve the meeting minute? Oh, actually, we'll continue all of those till April 1st. I think on that date, we will vote to make our recommendations on these, which will